Yeah, Saturday, May the 6th. And we still got one bull riding event on March 25th coming up. Anyway, any other questions?
Chris, thank you in the blood, God want to give you another opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll excuse me a minute, I'll reappear in the way. Would Miss Music join me at the podium? I appreciate you bringing her with you. Thank you. They're the ones that do the job. That's great. Well, it's my pleasure on our agenda tonight. I don't know, I never know who to place well. I need to place you or I can give the commission up back for this. If they're voting, I'm going to place things. So it's my pleasure now to welcome you all here and thank you for coming. And in honor of the work you do, we have a proclamation at night three. Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 9th through 15th, 2023. Whereas every day, telecommunications services in Sullivan County are responding to a request for emergency aid with professionalism, compassion, and commitment to the steadfast pursuit of their goal of saving lives and property. Whereas the effort and critical functions performed by telecommunications to answer calls for help, gather essential information, and ensure that appropriate assistance is provided is fundamental to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas telecommunications are a vital link between citizens and police officers, firefighters, and paramedics dependent upon quality and accuracy of information, monitoring of emergency activities, providing information to all party concerned, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the Association of Public Safety Communicators Official, Inc., annually dedicates the second full week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in honor of the thousands of men and women who respond to crisis calls for help, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment to render lifesaving assistance to the public. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Sullivan County that we do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through April 15th, 2023 as Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Sullivan County, Tennessee, and enlist the support of citizens of Sullivan County in honoring these men and women for the role that they play every day in making our lives, homes, and towns safer. Adopted by the county legislative body in possession duly assembled on this the 16th day of March, 2023. Congratulations, and I personally thank you. I know your community thanks you for your work. I'd like to give you this. Give you this on the microphone. You're welcome. Say a word to the lady.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate you taking the time to honor these men and women from Sullivan County, 911. They're the ones that answer the calls. It's about them every day. Last year, they answered over 212,000 calls, 911 and administrative calls. They dispatch police, fire, medical, all while being on the phone, giving instructions, maybe CPR, maybe delivering a baby, it may be helping somebody with a gunshot wound, and answering the radio at the same time, and dispatching the proper support that's needed. So every day, they never know what they're facing, but they do it, and they do it very well, and I'm very proud of them.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to listen to some 911 calls, 911 calls, and the kindness, and the patience, and the calmness that you give to our citizens. It's quite amazing. So thank you again. Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have anyone here from the National Mental Health Association representing them? If you were scratching your head, I thought you'd volunteer. If I may, I will read a proclamation from County Commissioners and myself on National Children's Mental Health Acceptance Day, May 5th, 2023. Whereas addressing the complete mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families today is essential to the health of Sullivan County. Whereas ensuing access to services that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate places upon our community that critical whereas is inappropriate destination we set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward children's mental health and wellbeing. Whereas Tennessee voices through its unique approach, effective caring for mental health needs in our community, youth, young adults, and families in our community. Now therefore, we have resolved an I Richard Vessel in Sullivan County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Children's Mental Health Acceptance Day in the county of Sullivan. This year's theme, See Me, Hear Me, Friday's the Day, reminds us to stand united and commit to vote acceptance of mental health needs and empowers us to strive to meet the mental health needs of every child, youth, young adult, and family in the county of Sullivan. And wouldn't sit right up, set my hand on the 60th of March to the We will forward that proclamation to the organization representative. And now I'm going to ask the Commissioners of Commissioner Blumberg and Commissioner King to give a hand, go into the presentation for proclamation.
You brought your own copy of the first one. I'll give you the mic.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much. Before I read this proclamation, let this young lady, I would like to say a few things about her accomplishments. What she has done as a, as a high school athlete and also academics in the classroom is unreal. And to accomplish some of these things that she's done, it takes teamwork, and it takes support. And I want to recognize some folks here that's with her tonight. I'd like to talk, if I would, about the grandparents, Mr. Frank Carr and Ms. Kathy Harrod. Would you all come up and stand with us? We would love for you to do that. Come up and stand with us. I also want to recognize her parents, Mr. Hank Harrod and Ms. Beth Harrod. Would you all come up and stand with us? And while I was talking about the teamwork and the support, this is the support that's, I'm going to get Andy up here this time. Andy's come. But the support, the support of a family goes a long way in the success of accomplishments that we make. And the support that you've had with your parents and your grandparents at these ball games, Brenda and I have attended some of these ball games and been there and watched the passion that they have for you and your success. And it's, it's a pleasure to see. And your uncle, Mr. Andy Harrod, the principal at East High School, Andy, would you come up and stand with us? Ms. Jenna Harrod, would you come up and stand with us?
Whereas the Sullivan County Board of County Commissioners deems it a noteworthy occasion to honor an accomplished female athlete, Ms. Jenna Harrod of Sullivan East High School. And whereas Ms. Harrod is a current senior, will soon trade her patriot red, white, and her blues of Sullivan East High School for college colors as she chooses the next step in her education career. And whereas Ms. Harrod's inspirational story includes an amazing athletic slate while attaining a 4.4 rating point average, leading her to place number two in her senior class. And whereas Ms. Harrod has broken the most career points to the team of Sullivan East Girls Basketball, benchmarked at 2,570. And whereas Ms. Harrod is now identified as the all-time leading scorer among Sullivan County Schools' male and female basketball players. I'm going to read that again. Whereas Ms. Harrod is now identified as the all-time leading scorer among Sullivan County Schools' male and female basketball players. And whereas Ms. Harrod has broken 13 basketball school records accompanied by these exceptional awards. All-State, two times; Conference Player of the Year, two times; All-Conference, three times; All-Northeast Tennessee First Team, three times; All-District, four times; and All-Region. And whereas Ms. Harrod has been recognized as district tournament MVP, and whereas Ms. Harrod has, has recognized at 2022 Northeast Tennessee Female Athlete of the Year. And now therefore, this county, Sullivan County Board of Commissioners proudly recognize the numerous elite boards and astounding athletic abilities and crowning achievements of Ms. Jenna Harrod. While wishing her great success in her collegiate career, now therefore, a copy of this proclamation, properly signed, shall be sent to, by the Sullivan County Clerk, Detective Representative Scott Campbell, John Crawford, Love Halsey, and Tennessee State Senator John Lundberg, serving in the Tennessee General Assembly, further allowing their responses to Ms. Harrod's hall margins to check. Now therefore, Mayor Richard Vimmel joins the Sullivan County Board of Sullivan County Commissioners in presenting this proclamation to Ms. Jenna Harrod of Sullivan East High School for claim being signed this 16th day of March, 2023.
Very, very proud of you, my lady. We have for you this proclamation. Do I have a coach coming up?
Yes, yes, sir.
Coach, would you like to say a few words before we begin with this?
Sure.
Thank you.
As you've heard, Jenna has been rather good for us in her career. But, you know, as a coach, it's all about team, and what she's done for our team has been immense. I mean, we have won conference tournaments, conference championships with her as being our key player. She was a great leader for us this year, her senior year. She's unbelievably physically tough, and she is unbelievably talented in a lot of different things. And whatever she chooses to do, she's going to do great things. I'll miss her, but I look forward to seeing what she does at the next level.
Thank you, sir.
First, I would just like to say how thankful I am for my coaches and for being on such amazing teams. I mean, I couldn't score any points if it wasn't for the teammates that I've had. So that, this is great for me, but wouldn't be able to do it without my team and my coaches. And I'd also like to thank my wonderful supporters, because this isn't possible without them either, even the ones still out there in the crowd. And I'd also like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come, come out here today and for taking your time to recognize me. So thank you all so much.
I just got something to say. It takes a team and it takes a community to do this. And I want to, Ms. Kathy, I've known you since that. You're right. Kathy and my sister went to school together all 12 years, and then my brother-in-law and you went to like the ninth grade. But anyway, known this family. Frank, you know, he, he came into, to this area. I've known him several years. You as a teacher after I was gone. But anyway, up there on that old hard rocky lot with John Sullivan selling cars and, you know, playing golf, my brother-in-law and John and that whole crew. But anyway, it's, I'm proud of what you all have done. And not, and then not only, your aunt also was a big athlete at East, set several records and stuff while she was there. And she's in North Georgia now, and her husband's a coach. So, you know, it keeps on going. So, but we're very proud of, in Pappy Fats and the Sullivan East and of what you all have done, especially you. But we've got some others in, in that area. I've got, you have to help me, Andy. The boys leading scorer, Mr. Barkley.
Dylan Ray, him and Gavin Rovin, the tie.
And Gavin, Gavin's, Gavin's neighbor. And then Mark Mason, they broke his record, and he was our like 69, 70, 71, or something like that. Close. So anyway, that's, we've been taking care of, you know, scoring at East High School. So, but anyway, again, I'm proud for y'all to come here. And, you know, this is what we, we like to see is the success stories. And also the teacher, at one time was the Teacher of the Week, maybe. So, you know, there's, they do a lot of hard work, so thank you all.
2,570 points. Would you all stand up and give this young lady a hand? This young lady just announced that she's going to Milligan College. Thank you. That's quite an inspiring story. Now I'd like to ask the Commissioner, Gary Sisson, to join me in the way for a proclamation for a very important person in our community. Gary, you're right. But as you know, I'm a teacher, so we have to do a history lesson here. Back in 1993, which is 30 years ago, the country super group Alabama had a hit song in March of 93. That song was Angels Among Us. Something else had happened in March of 93. It's Rhonda Chafin took over as the Executive Director of Second Harvest Food Bank. Rhonda, would you please come up here? I may be in a little trouble tonight. I didn't lie to her. I told her she'd be speaking in front of the Commission, and she will as soon as we're done with this. This is a very, very special lady, and the song fits well. She goes, she is an angel among us. She cares about the people with needs, and for 30 years, she has done a great job, Executive Director. And I can't read the whole resolution to you. Her accomplishments are so long, I gave some Cliff Notes. That thing has got such small print, get everything in there. We had to do it this way. But Rhonda, we appreciate everything you do. A proclamation honoring Rhonda Clifton as a re, wait, reaching the milestone of 30 years of outstanding service to Sullivan County and surrounding communities through her work as Executive Director of Second Harvest Food Bank, Northeast Tennessee. Whereas Rhonda has 30 years shown exemplary leadership and effort to solve hunger in our region and for contributing to the ending hunger at the local, regional, and national levels. Whereas Chafin served as Executive Director of Second Harvest Food Bank of Northeast Tennessee since 93, ever committed to the mission of the food bank to feed the hungry in Northeast Tennessee by securing and distributing food, engaging our community in the fight to end hunger through regional partnerships, programs, and education. Whereas over a 30-year tenure, tenure, food distribution has increased, and these numbers are the amazing part, from 1.6 million pounds in 1993 to over 13.3 million pounds in FY2022, closing the hunger gap in Northeast Tennessee. Second Harvest distributed an annual high of 16.6 million pounds of food in FY21 during COVID. That was an amazing feat, and if you saw the news footage, there were cars for miles. It was just amazing. Whereas Chafin has developed a second harvest budget from $300,000 to $5 million, leading three successful capital campaigns for the food bank's relocation and expansion to meet the hunger needs of the region. And whereas Chafin's leadership of the food bank and staff and board of directors has helped fulfill the organization's mission, and whereas the Second Harvest Food Bank in Northeast Tennessee is a primary source for over 120 of the region's food pantries, soup kitchens, and other hunger outreach organizations, in addition, food bank programs, distribution of food into the community, with programs such as Food for Kids, fresh produce, produce distributions, mobile pantries, senior grocery programs, senior food service programs, and veterans-serving veterans programs. That's a lot of work. And whereas in 2012, under Chafin's leadership, Second Harvest received the Feeding America National Food Bank's Hunger and Hope Award for Food Bank Advocacy Program of the Year, and was one of, one of the Feeding America's top four food banks in the year of 2020. Therefore, resolve, Mayor of Sullivan County, on behalf of the Sullivan County Commission, declares March 17th, that's tomorrow, 2023 to be Rhonda Chafin Day in Sullivan County, and urge all citizens to celebrate Chafin's achievements as we think of her 30 years of service and look forward to her continuing leadership and service to helping end hunger in our community and region. This lady has a lot of energy. If you've ever, and I can tell you, she is, it is hard to get volunteers to work, but she has done an amazing job. And by the way, you can thank Kathy for me, for all those numbers. But, so I'm not lying. I will give you the mic and let you speak to the Commission and the public.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's quite an honor, and it has been an honor to serve this county where I call home for all my life. And could not do any of these things without the wonderful staff members. We have over 30 staff that work at Second Harvest, and they, they do this work every day. And I don't do it single-handedly. It's a village, and it's a lot of volunteers. Ask Darlene, she volunteers every week at Second Harvest, every Tuesday, and we're glad to have her. But I just want to thank my staff, our board, volunteers. 46,000 hours a year of volunteer support that we receive, and we couldn't do it without them. But I just want to say that I couldn't do it without my husband, and he's not here tonight because he didn't know we were doing this. I didn't either. I was prepared to tell you a little bit about Second Harvest because that's what I do. But I am so grateful that I have wonderful parents, and Wayne and Carolyn Parrish and my late father, my grandparents, Arby and Jessie Milhorne, that ran the convenience store here in Sullivan County in Blumble. I couldn't have done it without them and their influence over my life, because each and every day, they told me it was wrong for anyone to go hungry. And I knew that in my life. And when I was in the retail food industry and as a broker, I donated food, and when this job came available in 93, I knew that God wanted me to take this job. And I'm very glad, I'm very honored to be in this position. And I'm very honored to work with such wonderful staff members that work so hard each and every day to make it happen. And there's many of them that have already put in 25 years of service, and we're so grateful to have them, and they should be honored as well. But thank you, and I want to thank the Commission and Mayor. You know, but our work is not done. I'm going to, I'm going to give you a little bit about Sullivan County. I have to. It's my job.
You got the mic.
23,000 people just in Sullivan County are food insecure. They don't know where their next meal might come from. Children, veterans, the elderly, they don't know where their meal may come from, and they depend on Second Harvest. They depend on food pantries, they depend on the backpack program. And if you're listening and you don't know anything about Second Harvest, or you would like to help, we need you to get involved. We need every individual in our region to get involved. In Northeast Tennessee, 75,000 people are food insecure, and we, it's wrong for anyone to not have food. It's the basic necessity of survival of life. And I can't tell you what an honor it is to serve our neighbors in need. And I want to continue to do that for many years. If I'm blessed to keep this job, I hope that I will be able to do that. But, but thank you so much to the County Commission for your support, our neighbors, and the community. I'm so blessed to be a part of this. So thank you.
Can we get 30 more of yours up?
Oh, I would love it. If I, if I can hold out that long, but they may not want me.
Okay, next up on our agenda, a blessing confirmation appointment, and we use this time for the County Commission to appoint volunteers to help us in, in government. Volunteer citizens, and we appreciate the, the work that they put in for free. So we have two positions to fill tonight. And the first one, which I won't read all of this, but pursuant to code 13-4 Tennessee Code 13-4-101, duly appointed by, adopted by the Sullivan County, Tennessee, and Sullivan County Mayor, has authority to appoint members of the Sullivan County Regional Planning Commission. Whereas Calvin Clifton of Blumble, Tennessee, is qualified and willing to serve as a board member of the Sullivan County Regional Planning Commission. And it is a reappointment, and Calvin has served the county with distinction and honor and integrity. So I will take a motion to appoint, to reappoint Commissioner Crawford, Commissioner Cows, and Commissioner Stem, and there was one, Commissioner Jones, second that appointment. I believe we have that on the board. And board opens. You've heard the motion and second appointment, Clifton. The board opens. Cast your votes on the appointment. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Ann Flotter take the vote.
23 yes, one absent.
Having received a necessary majority, Mr. Clifton is reappointed to be a member of the Sullivan County Planning Commission. Next up, we have another appointment, a reappointment to the board of the Sullivan County Planning Commission. Whereas Dr. Mary Roush of Blumble, Tennessee, is qualified and willing to serve as a board member of the Sullivan County Planning Commission. Do we have a motion to appoint Commissioner Cross, Commissioner Gardner, and Commissioner Crawford, second that motion and its discussion? Seem none, and the board opens. Please cast your vote on the motion to reappoint Dr. Mary Roush to the Sullivan County Planning Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote?
Mark, have you voted? I, I knew you would want to.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I know, I know Darlene distracted you there. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one abstain.
Having received a necessary majority, Dr. Roush is reappointed to the Sullivan County Planning Commission, and we, I know you've joined me in thanking Calvin Clifton and Dr. Mary Roush for the work that they do, and bring you good recommendations and good information to make decisions on land use in Sullivan County, which is one of our most important rights in this country. Next up, approval of commission minutes from a previous meeting, move us, Commissioner Gardner to accept as published, have second. Commissioner Cole seconds any, in discussion, any additions or corrections. Seeing none, the board opens, please cast your vote on the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting in Sullivan County Commission. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one abstain.
Minutes from previous meeting have been approved, having received a necessary majority. Next up, no republics. At this time, I get to recognize our county clerk. She does an excellent job of picking up this important part of our county, so. Madam clerk, you're recognized, read the list.
Paula F. Arnold, Jason Arthur, Andrea K. Eskey, Gary Almany Bagnall, Robin Lee Baines, Kristy Lynn Walderson, Kevin Richard Beddingfield, Deborah D. Boggs, Jada Bolden, Sarah Jane Carrico, Brooklyn Iverson Castle, Christina Werner Caudill, Melinda D. Chapman, Elizabeth Clark, Mitchell L. Clark, Robin Daniels, Teresa J. Darnell, Mary Ella Dishner, Ashley Daughtry, Cassidy Dunbar, Amanda Everett, Catherine Marie Felty, Anita Ruth Fields, Tara M. Fraley, Miranda Garrison Limer, Ronnie Wayne Gordon, David Alexander Gregory, Beth Goddard, Frances Diana Hamby, Davis Hickson, Charlie Elaine Honecker, Anita E. Hooker, John Christopher Huddleston, Gussie Don Hurd, Heather Jenkins, Robin A. Katrin, Barbara J. Lambert, Beverly Jane Lane, Sheila K. Long, William Derek Malcolm, Amy Lloyd Marshall, Martha A. Moore, Richard Mosley, Lauren Caitlin Odell, Philip Wesley Painter, Penny L. Abbott, Tracy Pierce, Tanya Ralph, Cynthia P. Ramsey, Ronald L. Ramsey, Philip Reed, Teresa Ann Rollins Fanning, Matthew C. Salisbury, Jacob Simak, Danielle, Danielle Nicole Taylor, Janice Artestor, Madison Vaughn, Glenda T. Venable, Jenny Wallace, Wendy M. White.
You've heard the list. Are there any objections to anyone identified as planning, being, or a Republican in Sullivan County? Commissioner Cole moves for adoption. Very good. Commissioner Iverson, same thing, vote, and declare so in public. Moved by Commissioner Cole for adoption of the list, second. Commissioner Crawford, in discussion. Seeing none, the board opens, please cast your vote. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-two yes, one abstain and one abstain.
Having received a necessary majority of the list as read, is approved and adopted. Next up is when we ask the public to share their thoughts with us, and Commissioner Cross has in hand the sign-up list. Andrew, thank you. Okay, we have three folks signed up, and this is normal and reasonable. At the end of this list, I will also ask if anyone wants to address the commission, in case you didn't see the sign-up sheet. So first person signed up is former Commissioner Mark Vance. Mark, you're recognized, would you give us your name and address for our records?
Thank you, Mayor and fellow commissioners. My name is Mark Vance. I live at two zero one Blue Ridge Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the resolution involving the observation of the park. I wanted to finish what I was wanting to say last week. I'm not, I'm not happy with the resolution about closing the park down. And it comes multiple fold. It comes to the point that I had to move my camper out. But also, knowing the history and knowing the things that's taken place in that campground, it was inevitable that something had to be done. I don't think the answer to this issue is to shut the park down, turn it back over to TBA, while you still have adequate time to make the decision if the county wants to fund this park in twenty twenty-five. I, I had talked to Mayor Venable many years ago that there's issues in that park that need to be fixed, and I'm proud of the decision he's made, and also the park committee to address these issues. But I also want to stand here and say that I think this whole thing from beginning has been handled wrong. We needed a park manager, someone with experience and a knowledge, and that individual was Chris Urkey, and he went in there and he identified a lot of the issues in that park, and those issues were things based on wear and tear, neglect, not being dealt with for years and years. And he has personally been slandered, he's been criticized, he's been attacked because he brought a liability issue to this county, an issue that he felt that this county needed to be aware of. My question is to a lot of people that have been in previous managers of that park, how come it has not been brought to this county before now? That's the question needs to be asked. Why has it not been brought before? The decision needs to be looked at, this resolution needs to be defeated, this resolution needs to be removed. It is not the proper way you do business. I know the county government's not a business. You don't scare the people, you don't go out and have people out there planning to come to this park, to have bash tournaments, dogged bins, and everything else, and they're all sitting there wondering whether they're going to be able to do it or not. Delay this resolution, move on, let the process of the lottery take place, fix the problems, reduce your liability, and then you will have between now and October of twenty twenty-four to decide whether you want to proceed on into that park. And treat the people fair and be honest with them. That's all you need. You need to take the positions, not just put in a resolution that we're going to shut the park down and try to pass it on sixteen votes and, and have so many other people affected by it. That is just not good government, folks. That is not good business. Nobody likes being treated that way. I, I'm really very disappointed. I said the last time, that is a terrible resolution, but dealing with these issues at that park is the right thing to do. But quit pointing blame on people that went in there to make that park what it needs to be. It has great potential, but the biggest thing is that the county commission and the county have the willpower and the ambition to proceed on past twenty twenty-five. If you don't, look, I'm grabbing it. If you're not going to make a commitment to put infrastructure into that park, turn it back over to TBA and let somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our sign-up sheet is Tammy Sprout. Tammy? If you, will give us your name and address for the, for the record.
Hi, Tammy Sprout, five seven five Drive Ranch Road. I'm in Love City, Tennessee. My voice is kind of shady because of nervous air. How am I? Before Chris took the park over, it was a good place to go. We enjoyed it, we didn't have any issues. Now the bashing on Facebook and going on is becoming almost childish and ridiculous. We are grown adults, and if the park isn't safe, why are there people in there camping? There are people up there camping. Here before, the cord to my camper melted. They replaced it, but you know who replaced it? Not a licensed professional replaced it. It was done by someone that ran the park. There are issues in the park. Do they need to be fixed? Yes. Not band-aided, and that's what they're doing. Ever since I've been there, they have been pulling in and putting bits and pieces back into the park. You can't do that. You got to fix it. My camper could have burnt to the ground with me laying in the bed. My kids were also there. What, I mean, is going to happen before we realize there's an issue? My life going to get lost? Somebody else's life going to get lost? What's going to be the problem? We got to fix it. And having people now camping up there now is not fixing anything. You turn right around and you allow people back in that campground when it's not even supposed to be open until April the first camp. I don't get it. I have nothing against Chris. I don't. I have liked Chris from the get-go. Not saying this is Chris's fault, but I am saying, get it fixed and fix it right before somebody ends up hurt. And if it is closing the park, then close the park till you get it fixed. Once it's fixed, and not by somebody off-road, it needs to be a licensed electrician going in there, not somebody Chris knows, not somebody Mark knows, not somebody anybody knows. Let's get it in there and fixed by the appropriate people and get it fixed right. We're all out now. At those anyway, we're out. So get it fixed. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Charles Bruce, I believe.
I am from State. I'm here for zoning.
No, okay.
I didn't know. I did, that's hard.
Not, not a problem, and I'll have to call you up when your, when your item comes up. Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Is there anyone else in attendance that, in our public comment section or agenda would like to speak to? Yes, sir, come on up. And if you will, I don't know if you, if you'll give us your name and address, and we do have three-minute limit, but let's go, let's go over.
Ron Brewer from, I live at five fifty-seven Medeville Road in Bristol, Tennessee.
Thank you, Ron.
I've been out there at park for fourteen, well, this coming year would be going on our thirteenth year. I've got a fifty amp camper, and what this lady was just talking about, the electrical issues. When you've got a fifty amp camper, you use an adapter cord, you can't run two air conditioners, you can't run your microwave or an air conditioner, but you learn to abide by and learn how to, you know, go about how much power you can use. And for us, people bad-mouthing Chris, I think he's done an excellent job. We've never, I've been out there since all the time, and some of the, one of the managers, Sir Pryor, he's sitting right here in this building right now, and everyone knows who he is, and I think the world of it. But we got to have somebody to run it as a business. And anybody that's here works in a business. I've worked in, you know, the upper end of it for my time before I retired, but it's got to be ran as such. And we had, we've had issues out there, and I've been down to these park committee meetings when, you know, Bob Nilsen, and, you know, seemed like we talked about stuff, nothing ever getting done, kind of got put on the back burner. Well, this park, since we've had, since the county's had it, everything that's, you know, been set, pushed back, pushed back, so to speak, when they started to camping out there, it was set up for the older campers. We, now it's all modern, everybody's got fifty amp campers. But you got to realize, I'm sorry, you can't use all of the electricity till we can get it corrected, and it's going to take a little bit of time, and it'll take a little money. But if the county, and just like Chris, the money he's made this past year, if you, you know, stood up putting that money into the general fund, it should go into a fund for the park itself, is my point of view, and let him operate off of that. And if, just like he needs eighteen thousand dollars to lie here and fix the electrical, get everything up to colder, up to snub. Well, give him that, and he's done, he made money last year. What happened to that money? I mean, it goes into the general fund and you use it on all the other departments. Why not just give it to him? And if he doesn't operate it, then move on, find someone else. I mean, that's about as much as I've got to say, but I've said, I've been out there all these years, and I, I was there when Dan was there, and then, you know, Brad and Mike himself, and then, you know, when Chris was there, and I think he's done an excellent job. And a lot of people's, you know, talked about him, his lifestyle, whatever. You don't judge people that way, not this day and time. You know, you judge people for what they are and their actions. You don't just, you know, say, well, he's bad because he does this. You don't do that. It's not right, it's not appropriate, a brawl of dogs. You don't act like it. I mean, there's a lot of people that, you know, needs to grow up, so to speak. You know, we have issues with people, the ones, and it says in our guidelines, and I can't find the mild ones, you can ask someone to leave at any time for no reason. There's no reason. So if you have an issue with a certain camper, ask him to leave. That's all you got to do, it's plain and simple. So I'm not going to say a whole lot more, don't take your time, I appreciate the time that you gave me. But let's reconsider what y'all are trying to do, because you're going to not only affect the campers, there's a lot of people in Sullivan County that use that park, go out there and dig park. I don't know how many of y'all is actually been out there and visited that park. I would say half long you have it or more. You know, you go by what everybody tells you. Go out there and take the time, do a drive out there, see what needs to be done, and say, okay, let's do it or let's not do it. Goes back to what Mark said, either fix the dang dumb truck or shut it down. And I don't want to see that happen. You know, I've got grandkids I want to be able to see go out there, so, you know, just think about what you're fixing to do. You're going to not only affect the campers, you're going to affect a lot of people in Sullivan County.
Need you to wrap it up, Ron. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? I believe we are on the road. Sir, come on up, come on up and speak. I'll remind you, and I, and I've let the last two go over a little bit, but we try to keep it three minutes, so.
I'll be brief.
Give us your name and address, if you would.
David Flamber, two thirty-five Keystone Drive, Blount.
Good to, good to meet you.
Nice to meet you. We need to talk about that other thing, too.
Thank you.
All I've heard is neglect, neglect, neglect. I have a question. Whose fault is that? Why have we neglected it all these years? And then we have a gentleman coming here in two years to make money. So the last thing you all need to be voting on is to kill this park when it's finally turned around making money. We got to figure out what to do. All right, so you restructured it to eighty-eight campsites. Okay, maybe that's the number, I don't know. I run bowling centers, not parks. But if it doesn't work, that eighty-eight's not the number, then we increase it or we decrease it. We can go from there. But it all sounds good on, on paper. I'm pretty good at math. But the last thing that you all need to be doing is to vote on to kill that park. You're going to lose your grant. I understand that there is a problem with the water, so you're losing all this money, and you're talking about all these things that need to be rebuilt when you've got a four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant, when you can be rebuilding every bathroom in there. And I have called the ADA on this, and they agree with me. You can restructure all the bathrooms, I don't know about all the other, I know you can't use it for electricity, but anyway, I'm done. But the last thing you all need to be doing is killing this park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? We do value the time that you spend with us, and we value your opinions. We do value the time that you spend with us, and we value your opinions. Declare the public comment section closed, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number one. Commissioner Calton, you're recognized to move item number one. Got to turn on that talk. Commissioner Calton moves adoption by item number one, section with the vice for governor. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on item number one. For mere formality, when the board opens, would you cast a vote on item number one? That's going to allow us to hear from Ms. Torbit. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change vote? Madam Clark, take vote.
23 yes, one abstain.
Item number one is adopted. We will recess to recognize Director of Planning Zoning, Amber Torbit.
Thank you so much. So you do have two packets. They should have been emailed to you. We need both of these tonight. And I apologize, in my haste to get things out, I put together the packet of just the individual resounding cases, and then I remembered we've already gone through some minor text amendments that we'll get to as well. And so that's your second packet. So we have two resounding requests to present to you today from individual landowners. Thank you. The first is from Miss Susan Ramsey, and she bought a home on Highway 11E in Piney Flats. I put a blue star on her property. It is own commercial. Years ago, several of the landowners, probably because it's on the highway, got their lots resumbed to V4. However, they're still being used as residences. So her request is to resum it back to R1 so she can utilize the reduced setbacks. V4 has greater setbacks than R1. She's remodeling her home. This went to our planning commission last month, and they are forwarding a favorable recommendation to you. You can go through if you want. There's her home. You can see she's doing some house wrap and additional things. She'd like to put a yard barn in the backyard, and that's where the setbacks come into play. This is split zoned by City of Bluff City. If you're familiar, Highway 11E, they annexed years ago, long before the growth plan, the first 50 feet of road frontage out the right of way. But that does not affect her building use. And so we did coordinate with the city mayor, and they are in favor of this recommendation. So that's the first case.
And I've heard the explanation from Ms. Torbit. Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, you're ready to vote. This comes to you in positive manner. It doesn't need a second. So when the board opens, you'll cast a vote on item number one. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change vote? Madam Clark, take vote.
23 yes, one abstain.
Item number one is adopted. Ms. Torbit, item number two.
Okay, thank you. The second request is from Mr. Charles Bruce. His request is to resum this property from R2, which is medium-density residential, to A5. As you can see, those two properties side by side were originally resummed to R2. Were not exactly... I wasn't here, so I don't know why. But he has a lot of land, and he'd like to resum it to A5 so that he can build a larger garage. And this went to the planning commission last month, and they're forwarding a favorable recommendation to you all, and there was no opposition. And he's here if you have any questions. You can... I have some pictures. There's a survey of his property. It's in your packet. I know it's hard to read. And there's his home. Okay, that's all I have, just three slides for each of it. So again, the request is from R2 to A5, which is our five-acre minimum agricultural residential zoning district.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions, Ms. Torbit?
There was no opposition at either of these, but if you want to have public comment...
Okay. I had you on earlier, Mr. Chris. Mr. Carford, you're ready to vote now?
Oh, okay.
I thought maybe you were reaching to be recognized. But seeing no one having questioned, we're ready to vote. When the board opens, cast your vote on item number two. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clark, take vote.
23 yes, one abstain.
Resuming that certain majority, item number two is adopted, Mr. Bruce. You didn't have to come up, Mr. Bruce. Thank you. And Ms. Torbit, you're already recognized on zoning amendments.
Okay. So I know we've done a lot of these lately, but Jason and I have been, as we deal with things, we find ever-so minor things that need to be corrected based upon how things are actually carried out. The first text amendment, it's in your slideshow, also in your packet, yes. Okay, the first one is dealing with home-based businesses. As you know, many, many people work out of their home, and that's a growing trend, and that works very well for us. If it is... If someone applies to work out of their home, they can fill out a little application, and Jason and I can approve it administratively. We refer to those as minor home occupations. Major home occupations require border zoning appeals approval. And the reason being, where the distinction is, if it is a business where it would require a client to come to the home, let's say they're a massage therapist, or they have a salon, you know, they cut hair, that is borderline retail and so in service because you're allowing the customers to come to your home. So the border zoning appeals will review that case. It allows the neighbors to have a voice in the public hearing. And so anything that does not require your customers or clients or students coming to your home for your small home-based business, we can approve administratively. So we distinguish between minor and major, and it's worked very well. But we didn't have what's highlighted in yellow in the use table. So we just want to make sure that it's distinct in the zoning code. Going along with that, if you'll flip to the next, are the definitions. What's highlighted in yellow basically reiterates what I just said. We would be adding those two paragraphs to the definition section of the zoning code. And then the last amendment also goes along with that, and it were literally adding those three words. These supplemental regulations are already in the zoning code. We just need to specify that. And that kind of all goes hand in hand, those three pages. And so the last text amendment, if you wanted to vote them on as a group, we're striking out those four words. And as you know, we deal with the stormwater program for the county. And for some reason, after all the audits that we've had from the state and the EPA, this little paragraph was not up to snuff, and nobody caught it, except Jason caught it. Basically, as you know, the county cannot do work on private property. We cannot maintain detention ponds or storm drains on private property. But it is the responsibility of our office to administer and enforce development plans. So if the development has a detention pond, we would be responsible for ensuring that it's maintained, whether it's at a shopping center or in a subdivision, for example. So we just need to strike out those three words because it is our responsibility as a county to enforce zoning, and stormwater is part of it. So that's all I have. I know it's a mouthful, but there are actually just some clarifications to make sure they read better as qualified.
And Ms. Torbit, may we vote on all of these? Anyone voting?
You can't. Again, as you know, it goes to... It has already passed our county, Bristol, and Kingsport planning commissions.
This guy might consent, Kelly. If anybody wants to bump one off of there, we'll bump it off. Otherwise, we'll vote on all of them. And we just like to record that, and we'll just have one screen for the first one. We have a motion to, well, it comes to a positive matter, so when the board opens, cast your vote to approve all the zoning amendments. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clark, take vote.
23 yes, one abstain.
Have received a necessary majority, all the zoning amendments are adopted. Ms. Torbit, any final words?
Thanks for asking. On your desk is our next round of survey per the comprehensive recreational study that we are charged to do. Luke put together a public input survey, and then in GIS, we were able to create a QR code. So the flyer on your desk with the beautiful picture on it, and that QR code, if you want to take the survey, this is the survey on recreational needs for the county. And this is just our first attempt to get some public input. Feel free to hang that up at your offices or share with your friends and family. We'll be distributing the survey to local area businesses, places like that. So that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Amber...
Oh, yes.
I'll get right from turn on here. We have several questions here. Mr. King, first.
Thank you, Mayor. Amber, if I was want to have a business in my home, okay, is there anything, parking, handicap, or is that you need to go to another location to have if you're going to do that?
Yeah, so if you were starting from scratch, a new business out of your home, not something, you know, grandfathered in. So if you were to approach our office and say, I would like to start a business out of our home, we would have you fill out your application, kind of like a business model. There are some restrictions. A home-based business is an accessory use to your house. Your dwelling, your living is your principal use. So you can obviously have home-based businesses. But it is restricted to just you and maybe one outside employee or anyone in your family. So to generate additional parking needs, that's telling us if you have a whole bunch of employees, you need to seek a business zoning district. But if you can meet the limitations of a small, traditional, home-based business, lots of real estate agents, some of our contractors, our small contractors, you know, they just work out of a pickup truck, they don't have heavy equipment, there are a lot of appropriate home-based businesses. And the point is, when you drive by that neighborhood, you don't see that a business is going on. Some people have startup businesses, so they want to start something. Once it grows beyond those limitations, then they need to seek, you know, commercial district. The border zoning appeals is there to hear applications that where, like I said previously, if they have a beauty salon or a massage therapist, something that means they're going to have a client come to the home for their appointment, that's fine. But it goes before the public meeting at the border zoning appeals, and the neighbors have a voice. In some cases, there are deed restrictions in a subdivision that they don't allow any type of home-based business, unless you're just working from your computer. Lots of folks do crafts in their basement, and that's fine, but they can't have, you know, craft fairs at the home. They go to a craft fair or flea market and places, or sell online. Most people just sell their stuff online. So to answer your question real simply, if your home-based business necessitates you having the need for a bunch of employee parking or customer parking, then it's no longer a residential... It doesn't need the residential limitations. Yeah.
One other question changing subject on stormwater. Allison Road and U. Bethel Road on that corner.
Right.
The lady down there, she started to tear that out. Who was actually over that? Was it T. Deck, or was it you all, or who?
Unfortunately, I'm your stormwater administrator, and we worked with the landowner and advised him that that small detention pond was part of the subdivision, and it was an easement on the plat, and he was aware of it. He thought it was just temporary during construction, but it is a permanent detention basin for the whole watershed drainage area of that small subdivision. So he did put it back. Highway Department helped us coordinate and inspect. You know, hopefully this spring and summer, more grass will grow back. But he did a lot of work. We got a lot of complaints. And in fact, the original developer was the one that called us immediately because he put in all that money doing the work, and then one homeowner tears it up. But I think it was just a misunderstanding. There are temporary sediment ponds during construction, which are not the same as your permanent solution.
So who's... Who is that landowner supposed to take care of that detention pond?
No, the HOA is supposed to maintain it. But he was the one that tried to fill it in, so he had to repair it. But all detention ponds, as part of a subdivision, should be maintained under the private deed restrictions of a homeowners association. And all that gets filed with us in the register of deeds and noted as easements on the survey plat. So you hope buyer beware.
Okay.
Yep. Water's got to go somewhere, you know? It's going to go downhill.
Thank you. That's a good question. I had the same question in my office. And honestly, if I can comment, if they don't have a homeowners association, I've always wondered who was responsible for maintaining it. And you have a bankrupt developer, where's that going?
So...
This is out of order, by the way. I apologize.
Okay.
But I think...
So that's fine.
Thank you for the job. Need to hear.
That's fine. So it's not a perfect system, but we try to have everything set up and filed and recorded prior to releasing final plat approval. And we also hold a bond, a surety or a revocable letter of credit established by the planning commission with the county highway superintendent setting the bond amount. So we keep a bond on all new developments, and once all the improvements are made, we reduce the bond for another year for maintenance. And we have to make sure that all subdivisions have an HOA. So a lot of subdivisions, if they're just the smaller ones, the county infrastructure or improvements can handle it. But when you have a larger subdivision, multi-phase subdivision, there needs to be an HOA. Because anytime you have common improvements, such as drainage holes and detention ponds on private property, again, the county is not going to do work on private property. You have to maintain an HOA.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, this is... We're still in recess for planning and zoning, so that's why I would allow this. We're moving on. Commissioner Akridge, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Amber, on these, the survey right here for Sepulvede area, I know we've been... I mean, they've become popular, right? We've done one for Weaver Pike. We've done one for 394. Bristol's got one going on right now for the Westgate Street corridor. Is there any other way? Like, can you email? Is there an email link to the survey that we could also help?
Oh, we sure can.
Okay.
Yes. Luke will send that out to John, and then he can distribute it to you all, and please share. I'm sorry these surveys are overlapping. As you know, we got the transportation grant that you all help support. So the consultants created that really fancy survey for the Weaver Pike study. Bristol got a similar grant for State Street, different consultant, but yeah, I'm sure they're doing a survey.
Yeah, it's going on right now.
Yeah, so we only have a year to get those projects done, but Bristol, Kingsport, and us all receive that grant for our projects. So very lucky, Sullivan County got three from T. Dot. This one is a reflection of our task of creating a comprehensive recreational tourism study. So this is actually county-wide. I know the moratorium resolution jumped started this project, but the survey is for the whole county. county. Everyone who lives in the county, city and county folks, obviously city folks use county recreational sites and vice versa, so we really want everyone to take the survey and that'll really help us identify needs, strengths, opportunities.
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, all three, I mean, usually five questions or something.
Yeah, it's, they're simple.
Please take them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward, you're recognized.
Amber, I don't want to speak to the zoning person tonight or the water drain person. I want, I want to comment to the Stormwater drain person, you have many titles.
Oh, wow.
And I'm very appreciative of you, all you do. But I want to speak to Amber Torbit, the mother, okay?
Proud Mama.
I want to congratulate your son AJ, I'm not sure that many people know this, but he was just selected, and this two-set man's one right there, I have long expect what he's done at Southeast High School. He just got selected to the Governor's School of, help me with this, Science and Engineering?
Yes.
I think there's about eight hundred to a thousand that applied, they only pick, is it forty? Is it that many?
Well, just for the UT Sciences and Engineering, I believe he was seventy, there are about seventy-five that got full scholarships and he selected Physics.
Awesome. Congratulations to him and your family.
Try having conversations with this dude. Thank you for recognizing him. Yeah, we're very proud.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Now, I'm going to recognize County Attorney Dan Street, who I told the same thing we just did, was illegal.
No, no, I did want to touch on the water, surface water runoff, I think I touched on that in my Bridge the Gap Seminar, but particularly this time of year when we get spring rains, Sullivan County does not maintain all the various methods that surface water runoff occurs in our county. I do know that our zoning office reviews some surface water plans and we require engineers to check off on them, but the easements and, you know, these ponds are becoming more popular now, I notice, but we have no obligation to maintain those. I just want to mention that because I do know that that causes a lot of trouble, particularly in the spring when we start having a lot of surface water runoff.
Thank you, Dan. And there's not one of us in the room that doesn't get a call wanting us to change the laws, Physics. I'm pure. Commissioner Vannell.
Amber, it rang a bell, one more thing, it rang a bell when you were talking about the retention ponds. There is a situation over on Barker Holler Road, I think, on the corner where there's a subdivision, and a man who lives in the house where the corner is where the retention pond is, there was a car ran off and broke the stand pipe. And I think we looked to see if there was an HOA, but if there ever was one, it's been disbanded, there was no money in it to do any repairs. So what would you recommend?
So, the best thing to do, if you get calls like that, I would first have them, funnel them to my office, because we can look at the maps, we can look at the records, if there's any surveys or plats on file, and then we'll coordinate with the Highway Department. Eric Kearney is my go-to person, I'll text him, he'll check it out or send his foreman out. Jim is the encyclopedia for all things county roads. So I rely on those gentlemen to help us out. Lots of times, you know, there are tiles in the county right away that outfall in the ditch line, and those are maintained by the Highway Department. They're doing lots of fixes right now, and so that's great. And then we map them, we GPS all of them, so we have a database of those. But outside on private property, as the mayor said, water's going to go downhill and if you have a low spot, you can't push it out onto someone else. But we can go to that site, I'll just write that down and we'll go check it out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and since this train is totally, Amber, I think that, I think I do it, I'm going to dismiss you. Since this train is totally off the track, I'm going to take advantage of it. We have talked at times, I've talked to some time to various commissioners who have suggested that maybe give Amber more time if they have more questions like we just had, that we might want to move planning and zoning session to our work session. And you have resolutions to deal with in the evening and you don't want to go too long and we all know they can go pretty long sometimes, but by the time you get nine o'clock, you're tired and so you've worked all day, you've been out all day and done something, so if any of you commissioners want to contact me and we get a consensus, I'll be, I'll have planning and zoning, I've already talked to Amber about it and she's, she's on board with it, she thinks it'd be more beneficial to you all to hear planning and zoning separate. So, just give me a call, if I spill a consensus, I'll, we'll try. And if it doesn't work, we'll be fine, we'll go back. So, let's go back in a second. Next up on the agenda, Consent Agenda, items five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen were approved by to be on Consent Agenda in Thursday night's work session. Is there an objection to any item on the Consent Agenda? All you have to object, will take it off, vote on it. It does require a unanimous vote on part of the commission to pass it the way we do. Single objection? When the board opens, please vote on approval of Consent Agenda. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take a vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Have received a necessary majority of unanimity, the Consent Agenda is passed. And that takes us into our regular resolution agenda and we have no old business, you do your work every month and don't have anybody coming back with you. So, run a new business, item number two. Commissioner Harvey, you're recognized on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hard to get it on.
I got it, thank you. This resolution terminates Sullivan County's lease agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority for Observation Knob Park. After this resolution was introduced to the commission at the work session last week, it was brought to our attention that a contract existed between Sullivan County and the Intermont Utility District effective nineteen ninety-seven to twenty thirty-seven, which impacts Observation Knob Park. This contract was created to fund improvements to the, fund improvements to the Intermont Utility District by providing new water lines to residents in the Painters Creek area, including a proposed new subdivision called Lakeview Estates. Developer Par Ventures in Sullivan County agreed in nineteen ninety-eight to underwrite the loan for Intermont by agreeing to purchase a minimum amount of water a month, one hundred and fifty thousand gallons, thereby guaranteeing Intermont's ability to meet its debt requirements. The price of the county share initially was seventeen hundred and twenty-five dollars per month for debt retirement for Intermont. This charge went to Observation Knob Park every month despite the fact that the park was closed five months of the year and required very little, if any, water during these five months. In addition, the contract stipulated that the months where water usage exceeded the one hundred and fifty thousand gallon minimum, Sullivan County would be expected to pay additional charges for every thousand gallons used over the required minimum. This was a pretty sweet deal for Intermont, especially given that the minimum water guarantee was to extend for forty years or even beyond forty years if the debt was not paid off by twenty thirty-seven. It is absurd that no one from Sullivan County who entered into this agreement twenty-six years ago did not recognize that a forty-year obligation for Observation Knob Park to twenty thirty-seven was actually twelve years beyond Sullivan County's lease agreement with TBA, which as we now know is scheduled to terminate in twenty twenty-five. I'm not a lawyer, but there are several issues pertaining to this agreement and the management of Observation Knob Park which are highly suspect and need to be exposed and challenged for the benefit of Sullivan County taxpayers. First, according to the terms of the agreement, Observation Knob Park was included in the project to obtain financing for a portion of the cost of constructing water lines in this area. The agreement established an extension of the contract beyond forty years if the project was not paid for. However, according to the President of Intermont, this project has already been paid for. Additionally, Sullivan County paid eighty thousand dollars upfront in nineteen ninety-eight to extend a six-inch water line to the entrance of Observation Knob Park. Per section two point three of this agreement, Sullivan County was to be reimbursed for this investment if Intermont was successful in obtaining a grant for the project. According to the nineteen ninety-eight document, Intermont Water District received a two hundred thousand dollar grant. So one of the questions we need answered is, was Sullivan County reimbursed for any portion of this eighty thousand dollar upfront investment as promised? If so, where's the documentation showing exactly how and when this reimbursement occurred? Given the intent of this agreement, which was to facilitate funding for this water improvement project, why is Sullivan County still on the hook to pay a minimum water usage fee which has increased from seventeen hundred and twenty-five dollars per month to just under four thousand dollars per month? This is a one hundred and thirty-five percent increase. Also, regarding these proposed increased rates, there is a clause in the contract which states, and I quote, "The district shall hold a public hearing on the proposed monthly user charges and each customer shall be afforded the opportunity of inquiry and suggestion." Question, was Sullivan County notified of these public hearings each and every time that a rate hike was adopted by Intermont? Specifically, there was a whopping twenty-five percent increase in the water rate last year. I was informed that every customer who was notified had responded to this rate increase except Sullivan County. Why was this ignored? Ultimately, is it Sullivan County taxpayers who bear the cost of these increased charges? Who is the gatekeeper here? Sadly, it is apparent that no one, including the new professional management of Observation Knob Park, has sounded any alarm regarding these increasingly expensive water prices. In reviewing the audit history for water usage at Observation Knob Park for the past nineteen years, I was only able to get records back to two thousand and four, Sullivan County has paid well over six hundred thousand dollars for water to Observation Knob Park. In fact, under the current park's professional management, Sullivan County paid a whopping thirty-six thousand, two hundred and eight dollars for only four months of water into Observation Knob Park from the period of mid-May twenty-two to late-August twenty-two. When I questioned how this substantial increase occurred, I was told that the meter person informed the park management that the meter was spinning and there was likely a water plug, a water break somewhere in the campsite water lines. Here are the facts regarding annual water charges for Observation Knob Park. In the five years from two thousand and four to two thousand and nine, annual rates increased from sixteen thousand, three hundred to twenty-four thousand, three hundred, which represented a forty-nine percent increase. Over the next nine years, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, these annual rates increased twenty-four thousand, three hundred to thirty-seven thousand, two hundred. This represented a fifty-three percent increase. Then, in the most recent three years, from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two, annual rates have increased from thirty-seven thousand, two hundred to sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. This represents a seventy-four percent increase in only three years. Additionally, in regard to the contract with Intermont, Sullivan County has paid for six million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand gallons of water above what they actually used, which based on the current minimum rate of twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents or a thousand gallons, places the value that Sullivan County has overpaid at more than two hundred thousand dollars. No one would argue that Intermont supplying water to six hundred homes in the Painters Creek area is a positive outcome and has benefited Sullivan County's tax base with additional homes and has improved the lives of many Sullivan County residents. However, there should be some way for attorneys to disconnect the county's obligations for this project and the continued need to support the citizens in this district from the burdensome and increasingly unbalanced financial obligations that are connected to Observation Knob Park via a contract that has clearly outlived and outperformed the original intent of this agreement. The details associated with this agreement should be turned over to the appropriate attorneys representing both Sullivan County and Intermont Utility in order to negotiate a fair payment which will protect the water services for citizens in the Painters Creek area but relinquish the requirement to pay a minimum water usage rate for Observation Knob Park. In addition, assuming that Sullivan County terminates the TBA lease before twenty twenty-five and another entity contracts with TBA to lease Observation Knob Park, then the attorneys for Sullivan County and Intermont should establish a credit amount to Sullivan County relative to the negotiated price agreed to be paid to Intermont by the new, let's see. There have been numerous issues identified in this agreement which should be challenged and many questions identified which hopefully will provide significant leverage for Sullivan County to update this agreement with Intermont. So the question remains, does Sullivan County want to stay in the campground, campground business, given the multiple maintenance and liability risks that are associated with doing so? Regarding the question as to whether the five hundred thousand dollar estimate needed to repair and upgrade the multiple water and electrical problems is accurate, I can tell you that I checked with a professional electrician who estimated the cost to convert the campsites from thirty amp to fifty amp. This could run alone anywhere from two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand, depending on the size of the campground. Of course, this figure does not even touch the cost of repairs and renovations that are needed on the bathhouses nor the cost of re-graveling the entire campsite. But clearly, the most important issue that we face by reopening this campsite is safety. We've talked a lot about money here, but when it comes to a life, there really isn't any money figure that we can attach to that, whether it's an injury or death. There are so many potential liabilities in this park. Why in the world do we want to subject our county to these multiple liability risks with the expectation of only breaking even financially or at best making a small profit, which we now know must be rolled over into an ongoing maintenance budget, including the eighteen thousand dollar cost that's needed to be spent immediately just to correct the failed electrical inspections for just a portion of the campsite? And what about the potential liability from trees falling on the campsite? No one has even mentioned this. However, I recently received a note regarding damage to a camper's property from a fallen tree limb in the park. As I've stated before, Sullivan County has dodged many bullets at Observation Knob Park due to kicking this can down the road relative to significant maintenance issues and ignoring and not managing a contractual agreement which has significantly disadvantaged the viability of this campground making a profit. Had a private entity leased and managed Observation Knob Park in the same manner that Sullivan County has done so for the past decade, they would certainly have gone bankrupt. And no one, no one would be trying to justify sinking more money into this relentless money pit. I hope that my fellow commissioners will be courageous and terminate Sullivan County's lease with TBA, noting that we have received confirmation from TBA that there will be no penalty associated with an early termination date and thereby stop future funding. It is our choice at this moment in time to either remain in the campground business and consequently assume the ongoing safety risk and potential liabilities, or terminate the lease with TBA and turn the contractual issues over to the appropriate attorneys to help us negotiate a reasonable exit strategy. I recommend that this resolution be placed on first reading.
Ms. Harvey moves into motion of item number two, seconded by a number of people on, is this on first reading or, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Harvey? Ms. Harvey, I noticed you have your statement tied to keep, somebody has transcribed, would you share that with the clerk? I know she would love to have, have that if you can, and we appreciate that. There's a lot of information in there. Any, any questions for Ms. Harvey on item number one? Seeing none, we will hear this at our, on our regular calendar and second reading in April. Appreciate all the work everyone's done on this and research. Appreciate all the work everyone's done on this and research, and certainly the points you've brought up, we should get with... I believe you would like us to get with county attorney and look at the application of the contract that was signed forty years ago, and we'll do that, and hopefully I'll put it forward for you in the April meeting. And we'll share that with every commissioner as we develop. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Okay, moving on, item number three.
I'm sorry, I thought I asked, and I thought I looked, and I didn't.
We got Mark back here. Anyway, you gotta gavel, we could gavel him down.
Just throw it at him if you like.
But if we're gonna extend this and try to go through all the process, we've got people supposed to be coming in April first, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we not postpone them coming in till we get this settled? I mean, I'd hate to see people move their campers back in and then turn right around and then have to move them back out.
I believe the public can make that... In your asking me, so I'll respond, the public can make their own decision as to whether they want to be in the rep. The loss in revenue, if the commission decides to continue on for a year and look at it or whatever, whatever decision's made other than closing it, is the loss in revenue will be substantial for April.
Well, we're gonna vote on this next meeting, right? So there should be some... You know, we all know one way or the other what we're gonna do by next meeting.
Well, the issue, you know, you all have carte blanche on the resolution, and the issue may change. So we can't predict that, but I do know that we have people that are poised and waiting till March twentieth to apply for those. And I don't disagree with you, it's a lot of trouble to go in and come back out if it were to happen. And that's an individual decision on whether they want to get in the lottery to potentially have a side if the commission decides to go in and operate for another year.
What I'd like to do is make a motion to amend the... We would keep the campground closed till we have the next meeting and have a vote on this?
Well, you have to pass a resolution first before you can amend.
I can make a motion, though, can't I?
I believe... I'll check with our attorney, but I believe a motion would be in order if... Do you mind if I could defer with Dan for just a second? I think a motion would be in order, but just a second.
Oh, okay. Chair's gonna rule that is a proper motion after you've heard with county attorney. So would you restate your motion, Mr. King?
That we not open the campground, so we have a vote on this resolution.
Simple enough. Do we have a second? We have Commissioner May and Commissioner Glover for second. Chairman Glover, any discussion for the sponsor?
Okay. You can get up there a little closer, then. Maybe I need to talk louder. But anyway, a motion to keep the campground closed till we vote on this resolution next month, till we're people stop moving in, we're going through the process, and then move in and then if we vote down, then move back out. So that's what... Just give it one month till we can have a vote on before we open.
Clear on motion? We have a proper motion, proper second in discussion session. Sam?
Mr. Chairman, do we have... Have we made any advertisement with TBA and told them as the landowners and who our lease is with that we might be changing the date of opening up the campground? Have we done that?
Obviously, that's just happened right now.
Do we have... Have we informed them that we're opening up April first?
Yes, they're aware of the schedule.
Thank you. I don't know that we can...
Those instructions were in my letter, which was the sheriff and TBA, that we would be accepting applications for the campground, any of the applications for the campground, and that on or about April first, we would have a lottery to determine that. So they're aware we're gonna open on April first. They're not aware of the debate here tonight. Okay, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to clarify if the motion was to keep it closed for another month until the next county commission or until this resolution's voted on, because it could get deferred next month. So one time you said until the next resolution is voted on, but then you came back and said until next month. So this, I'd like that clarified.
When we have our next meeting, what day is it? Well, I mean, you can say the next meeting, but I'll look it up. Just to clarify the date. Eighteenth...
Or before.
Okay. All right. April. Yeah. Oh, well, I'm wrong. Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I must have been the wrong month. It is the twentieth.
Okay, twentieth. Twentieth or like.
We got the motion clear. We got the board clear. Okay. The board is clear. Commissioner, will you get that on the board? Well, Commissioner Stidham, you're recognized. On the motion?
Yeah, on the motion, that's to keep it closed. When is it officially open? I know we were gonna take... On April first, you were gonna take the... Do the lottery. What date is it officially open after the lottery is conducted on April first?
Well, I don't have a plan right now, but it would follow, in my small logical mind, that we would go ahead and continue to do everything in preparation for opening, except open. So we would... That would be my plan as mayor responsible for the park, is go ahead and put out applications, have the lotteries, and then wait on this body to act and determine if you can move in. That would be my order as mayor. On first plus through. Now, I'm open to discussion on any of... For many of you about that, but as I say, just three minutes into this, that's what I would do as mayor, not chairman. We'll get that on the board so folks can see how they are... Mr. Crosswhite, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I know some campers that have already signed up to do what we can camp, starting April first while we do a thing. So, yeah, they're taking reservations right now.
Yeah, well, let's come to have a discussion. Ms. Crosswhite, how's it going? Thank you. Commissioner...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
The second time you stated your motion, you said to keep it closed until April first. Do you want to end it there? I mean, April twentieth? Do you want to end it there, because you did say until you vote on this resolution? What if you don't vote on the resolution?
But then, when we take the vote, we'll know what we're gonna do with campground. So it will go up to the twentieth. Well, it sort of like... Well, I was actually worried on the twentieth, the resolution that you heard. Start off. Start off? So I thought I would ask if you want to change it to hold off until April twentieth.
Keep it closed until April twentieth.
End it there.
End it there. And then if we need to, then we can do another resolution.
Okay.
May I... Thank you, Commissioner. You serve... Yeah, we got straight to the... Okay, good. Commissioner Locke, you're recognized.
Thanks, Chair. We've listened to these people come up here and express their opinions and their views, thoughts on the park for the last four months. We're not gonna gather any more information than what we've already heard tonight and the past couple of weeks. So the term "kick the can" down the road has been used quite a bit, and that's what we're doing tonight by putting it on first reading. Let's wave with the rules and vote on this, up or down, and be done with it.
Let me, if I might, we got the board clear, so Commissioner Vanover here next, but let me say this from the mayor's standpoint, not the chairman's standpoint, because I can't do that. But I would consider, after the meeting tonight, calling special call meeting prior to April one, so that this can be concluded. And I think that's the best way for the public, even though we will continue to have the drawing and lottery. But Dan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want my fellow commissioners to think about one thing before we take a vote on this, that there is a train of thought that it's county government's responsibility to protect the citizens, educate the children, keep the potholes filled, and stay out of people's way. And it's a philosophical question, I think, is it the responsibility of county governments to be competing with private businesses in the campground business? I know it's an amenity, I know it's something we offer our citizens, but I don't think it's an amenity that's taken advantage of by very many. So I'd just like for people to think about, is that the duty of our county government to be in the campground business? Is that why we're here? Like I said, we've got the sheriff's department to protect our citizens, we need to educate our children, we need to keep the roads in good shape, and maybe stay out of people's way. That's just one thought, so if you keep that in mind, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We have... I'm sorry. Dan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to explain the purpose in the first reading, or the process, I suppose. We merge two things we're doing into one when we vote on something on first reading. And the reason I mention this is, the statement was made, let's vote on it. I assume it's put on first reading, because it requires sixteen votes. What we're doing is suspending the rules. So you could vote tonight to suspend the rules, that does require sixteen votes, and then you can vote on this resolution, and it only takes twelve... Thirteen to pass. Does that make sense?
Well, we can only...
We've done it three times.
Thank you, Chairman. I kind of agree with something the chair of the commission, i.e. mayor, kind of said in the second half. Tonight's March sixteenth, third Thursday. March is a funny month, this guy's got five Thursdays in it. There are a lot of questions surrounding this whole obligation, and I agree sometimes with let's just vote and go on. But in my opinion, we have plenty of time for some work to get done next week and have a call meeting, and leave it on first reading and have that call meeting to actually vote on it by April first, in my opinion.
That can happen.
Yeah.
And you can call...
Right, and that's where we can... We can ask for a call meeting, or the mayor, as a mayor, can have a call meeting. And I think we have plenty of time in the next two weeks to have that done, to have some type of resolution to this, possibly by April first.
We have basically two weeks.
Yeah.
And as I say, when we leave this meeting, if we leave it without having voted on it, I will give great consideration. And if I don't do it, and you want to, you can do it yourself. But I am inclined to do that if we leave this meeting tonight on first. I agree, we need to move on to this, and you mentioned my name, so I'll go ahead and tour a little bit, but... It's all right. There are contracts that this park has that will have to be canceled, and you know, you need all that information. I don't have it online now. I don't have all the information about... The total range is fixed. I think y'all saw the people paper, come to agree with them often, but sometimes it doesn't. So we didn't have a... We don't have a motion to suspend rules tonight. The board's closed, so is there further discussion? Mr. Glover and Commissioner... Commissioner Glover first.
This is a question for Attorney Street. Dan, if we suspend the rules tonight, we have to have sixteen votes to suspend the rules, correct?
Yeah.
If we get to sixteen votes to suspend the rules, and then we vote on item number two as a resolution, we just have to have thirteen votes to pass it, correct?
Mr. Ward?
Are there any other... Are we under any other contracts right now for events up there?
Yeah.
And if we are, how many? Who? What? What's the legal ramifications of those of the contracts we've already signed? From what I understand, there's a water dog event that's gonna be televised... Somebody correct me if I'm wrong here? That's gonna be televised from up there?
That's my information.
Okay. I know we've got a lot of people coming to this area for several events that we've already booked for that area, so we probably ought to seek some legal advice before we start terminating. And I'll be honest with you, you know, we can go to all the commissioner schools, but they want to offer that in Nashville. But I have yet to hear anything down there that educates us on how to vote right here. I'm about as fifty-fifty as I've ever been right now. I hear a lot of figures, I've yet to see anything on paper about what this costs, what the electrical costs, damage here. And me and Cheryl talked earlier, I was on board. But I'd just like to see some more concrete numbers, what's going on, and let's talk about these contracts that we've already signed for people coming to this area. And legally, where do we stand with those?
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Stidham, I skipped you for some reason.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman, currently, we are not on the resolution. We have passed a resolution. We're in discussion on a motion on the floor to stop the park from, Mr. King, so the resolution about voting on it, we have passed that. I would ask Mr. King, though, since you agreed to do a special meeting, to go ahead and just pull that motion, and that we do a special call meeting to vote on this.
You want to reply?
If we're gonna have a special meeting, and we're gonna vote on it, that... At that meeting, it'd be the same as we wait till our regular commission meeting, correct?
That's all right.
I said, at that meeting, we're gonna vote on this, so we won't know up or down whether we're gonna close the park.
If we have a special call...
If we have the special call meeting.
We've had a special call meeting to handle only item number two, and that would be the only thing that would happen that night, and you'd have a chance to vote it up or down with thirteen votes.
If we're gonna do that...
And get all the information that you need.
I'll pull the motion, because there's no use of waiting until we have our commission meeting, we're already gonna do it. I'll pull the motion.
You don't need any more information. Okay. So Commissioner Gardner, you're recognized.
Commissioner Stidham.
Oh, okay, okay. Very good. Folks, we're, the board is clear, so you're ready to vote. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I got my, you went through it, okay. Okay, thank you, Dwight. I don't remember, and, and, don't hesitate to do this in the interreading time we have here. This is a pretty serious problem for Sullivan County, and very serious people, and people have very serious concerns. And we've moved on beyond number two. We're on, we're on, under personal privilege by the chairman, so, but I'm just saying, if you need information, please check with the sponsor. She's gathered good information, she has investigated this. Check with your fellow commissioners. Don't violate, don't move toward a decision. If you do, that's a violation of sunshine law. If it's an information call, please do that. And I would encourage you to call me if you want information. If I don't have it, I'll get it for you. And I, so as I said, this is, Commissioner Ward said he was, not sure who it was on this one, and I, I've got an opinion, but it is a tough decision, and we just want to arrive at the best for Sullivan County, and that's all we're doing. Anyway, back in session. Commissioner Harvey, you're recognized.
I'd like a motion to waiver of rules.
That sounds all right. We're on item number two. I'm ruling that commission out of, I'm ruling that motion out of order, I'm recognizing. Commissioner Carl, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a motion to amend the sheriff's department budget to cover a budget shortfall due to increased costs in food, medicine, fuel. I want to thank Larry Bailey and Sheriff Cassidy for coming to a compromise on this. We were able to basically cut the amount in half by moving some extra money over from payroll, and I'll open the floor up for questions.
You've heard explanation accepted by a number of commissioners. Yet we have a list. Mr. Iverson, you're recognized.
Actually, I'm not sure if the sheriff is still here, but if he is, and if he's not, I still want him to know, but.
Is he here?
Actually, Joe, you don't need to come up unless somebody else wants to talk. I just wanted to say thank you. I asked you to help us, and I asked you to look through your own budget and find ways of looking, and I really want to say I very much appreciate you working with us.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to say we're all about spirit cooperation, and with your all's blessing, and the director of finance, Larry Bailey, we did have four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars this April five, so thank you all, I appreciate it.
I just want to say, I missed, I went from asking you questions to being a co-sponsor, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Moore, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff. We will be here right now.
Thank you. Mr., explain what the compromise is, what they came up with.
Well, the compromise is they transferred over four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the payroll accounts of both the sheriff and the jail to help cut into the amount that they needed to cover the budget shortfall.
For this budget year, just till June thirtieth.
Exactly, exactly. So there's no money out of the general fund?
Four hundred and thirty-nine thousand is all we will need.
Okay. All right. All right. And that's, basically, that's about what we did last year, is that not right? Mr. Bailey, close.
I'm sorry, Larry, I do. Ever, depending on my memory, totally, but we have in years past, that could be about, some consumers, that's what's been moved.
That's what I, first I remember having to move payroll, but that was our more healthy account because of our shortage of employees. But we did have, I think we did find some line items that we moved around last year as well, and cut, cut a bunch of other equipment over time.
All right.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Glover, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Larry, the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars coming out of the general fund to transfer it over to that department, if they don't use all that money, that will be turned back into the, to the budget office to go back in the general fund, is that correct? How much did they turn back in last year, do you know?
It was quite a bit last year, if I can remember. I'm not going to say it like I say. I'm afraid to say any figure like I'm looking at. There's so many figures you deal with in a day's time, but in looking at the latest figures sometime over the last few days, it was considerable value, it was more than I expected when I looked back at it.
So this amount here, the four seventy-five, if any of that's left, and they turn it back in, and we'll decide for later, what they're going to increase for the new budget, right?
New budget will be decided on its own. This would not have anything, unless you all just chose to include it, it's not part of the new budget, it's separate. They've got their request in for the new budget, which is approximately what their expenditure is going to be this year, and so it stands on its own, a decision on that new budget.
But if it's basis, and they do use all four seventy-five, that lead up to P D. tax increases more likely, right?
And remember, that four seventy-five from our payroll, that's, that's leaving us a lot of cushion, too, if we don't fill those positions, or if a big case doesn't come up. So whatever we still don't spend in payroll, still will go back to the general fund, so I can't make a guesstimate on that, but it's still going to go all the way back to the general fund. And what we do not spend, the addition of the four sixteen that you all give to our budget, of course, that goes back to the general fund as well.
Okay, that gets you, that gets you, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for waiver of rules on this.
I'm sorry?
Waiver of rules.
The sponsor wishes to waive the rules for immediate introduction and adoption of item number three. I've still got the board, so Commissioner Ward, you're recognized.
Mr. Bailey, would you say it's safe to say that every, say the last four years, that the sheriff's department has given back money to the general fund?
Very certain that the sheriff's department has given back some money each of the last few years, because they've not overspent their budget, and I would remember if they'd overspent it.
So probably this is the first time in a while the sheriff Cassidy has come and asked for extra because of inflation?
No, he's, he's asked in other years, many years.
One comment I would say is, we're either tough on crime or we're not. If we're tough on crime, and Sullivan County wants to be tough on crime and lock people up, it comes with a price tag. So we say lock these criminals up, and then the very next chance, we say let's kick them out of jail as quick as we can, because we can't afford to house them. So we need to decide which one we're going to do here. Are we going to lock them up, try to be tough on crime in Sullivan County, or are we going to try to release everybody? Now, we do as many as we can on the pre-trial program and house arrest program, but there's some people that you don't want out in this neighborhood. Now, that's okay if it's somebody else's kid, or somebody else's granddaughter, or grandson, but when it happens to you, it's different, okay? So you might want to think about that. That man stands there, and he's done everything he possibly can for this county, and we're going to make him come back, and every time he needs money to hold his hand out and beg for it. So we're shifting money here and shifting money there, and he's worked hard, and everybody over there's worked hard, but when he needs money to hire another employee, we're going to make him come back over here. That doesn't make sense to me. I've got another word other than government, it's what I call government.
Didn't mean to interrupt you. We have clean board. Commissioner Carr has moved for the immediate introduction and adoption of item number three, requires sixteen votes, and properly sectioned by number. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number three. Let's don't, let's don't, I'll be like the bartender, take it outside. No, 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 no. Just kidding. Just trying to lighten it up a little bit, we understand the argument. Everybody voted? Anybody wish to change your vote? Madler, take the vote.
Twenty-two yes, one no, one absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number three is adopted. Next up, item number four, Commissioner David Hayes, sponsor of item number four, he had several co-sponsors, any of the co-sponsors, this is on first reading, any of the co-sponsors want to handle it. Commissioner Pierce, you're recognized on item number four.
We'll ask for a waiver of rules on this resolution also. This resolution is to amend the general fund, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair the building on Houston Mountain, housing the eight hundred megahertz radio system, whereas the Sullivan County eight hundred megahertz system has a tower and a building on Houston Mountain, housing equipment for the NOAA weather system, as well as the radio systems that transmit for most of Sullivan County, and whereas the building needs significant repairs to stop the leaks from the roof, as well as the weatherizing the block exterior walls, whereas this facility provides radio transmissions for the Sher, Sher Highway bar for most of Sullivan County, and whereas for these unfamiliar with the location, it takes approximately one and a half hours to travel from Blumble up a very steep side of the mountain from Elizabethan. And I ask for a waiver of rules to approve this.
Commissioner Pierce. Moves to waive the rule for immediate introduction and adoption of item number four, seconded by several commissioners. Any questions? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on item number four, when the board opens, cast your vote, requires sixteen votes for passage. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madler, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number four is adopted. Moving on, past the items on our agenda that were on consent calendar, the next item up is item fourteen. Commissioner Cross, you're recognized on item fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is a grant, bringing in money. I will also add to this, that this has already been passed by us, we are simply rewording this because it was extended through three years, so this is nothing new, we've actually already passed this. I am asking for waiver of rules tonight to get this in because they need it in fairly quickly, but it is a grant being brought in for these three things listed here, and you can see the split up of that million right there, over the three years.
Commissioner Cross moves for immediate introduction and adoption of item number fourteen, seconded by Commissioner Michael Cole. Board's up, are the floors open for discussion? Any questions for sponsors?
All in favor, please be added as co-sponsors.
Without objection, everyone voting in affirmative, will be shown as a prime co-sponsor. Ready to vote, when the board opens, cast your vote on item number fourteen. Requires twenty, sixteen votes for passage. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madler, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Have received necessary majority, item fourteen is adopted. Next up, item fifteen, Commissioner Gary Stidham, Commissioner Stidham on first reading. You're recognized. Let me turn the mic on. Push your button. Are you pushing? Let me see if I can do it otherwise than Gary. You got it? Okay, there you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution deserves support from Tennessee General Assembly for Senate Bill nine twenty-seven. Sheriff Cassidy is here, he brought this to us. I would ask we do waiver of rules, this is a, asking for support. If you have any questions, the sheriff Cassidy's here, and I'm sure he overwhelmingly supports this, and that's what we're doing to support our sheriff and what he's doing with this program.
Thank you, Mr. Stidham, we need a second, we don't, I don't have one on mine.
We say we have several listed, we have several listed, Mr. Chairman, they're very faint on the copy, you can't hardly see them. Ms. Carlton Vanover, Locke.
Very good.
Barton Iverson.
Numerous commissioners have seconded, Commissioner Jones, you're recognized.
Mr. Stidham, is this, we need to get this before the general assembly, when will this be heard?
Yeah, it was, actually, it was headed to committee already, but it'll be up for voting soon, so we need to go ahead and do waiver of rules, I can get this up.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Well, that's the Rime-Lap funds to, for the medication for HIV inmates, which is about four thousand dollars a month, so it's going to be tremendous across the state, and I bet all ninety-five sheriffs support, and our Senator Lundberg and Bud Holes, he does a great job expediting this, so this will be great across the state of Tennessee, getting those funds into our jails, our local jails.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any other questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Stidham moves for immediate introduction and adoption of item number fifteen, seconded by various commissioners. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item fifteen, requires sixteen votes. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madler, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Item fifteen is adopted, having received the necessary majority. Next up, item sixteen, Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized on item sixteen. First reading? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Joe, I've got all the information up here, but you're recognized anyway, I can be wrong, but you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution to amend our private act, and I was approached by, I think, every Sessions judge that we have in the county, and so if you look at our private act that was enacted in nineteen forty-seven, it prohibits the Sessions judges from hearing DUI cases, okay? Our Sessions judges have been hearing DUI cases, I can tell you, since nineteen forty-seven. There is a different statute that gives general Sessions courts certain jurisdictions, and it, that was passed by the legislature, and it is in conflict with what we've got written here in the private act, and it's in conflict with what we're doing in reality. So I think we just, that to align, and I'd ask for a waiver of rules.
Commissioner McMurry moves immediate introduction and adoption of item sixteen. Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you. Commissioner McMurry, I don't see you have a co-sponsor, I'd be glad to do that.
And, and, thank you, thank you, and if anybody, we can, everybody that votes in favor can be a co-sponsor. Commissioner Means and Commissioner Jones have both expressed an interest, so anyone else that votes in favor can do that.
Thank you. All voting in affirmative will be listed as co-prime sponsors. Any additional questions? Seeing none, the board opens, cast your vote on item sixteen. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madler, take the votes.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Have received necessary majority, item fifteen, sixteen is adopted. Next up. We don't have it on item seventeen, we have sponsors, we don't, please list, Commissioner Jones is sponsor of item seventeen, we have second co-sponsor, Cross, and Ward are second, so we're in proper order, so. in proper order. So Sam, I feel bad asking you to explain it, but I will.
I'd like to ask Mr. Kearney.
Oh, I'd like to ask Mr. Kearney to come up if you want to explain this. We've been given funds from the, in state industrial highway funds under a Tennessee code. You can read that. I'm not going to read it all to you. I think we all know this. But to install various signs, I think that second is very important, install signs, snowplow markers, reflectors, chevons, thermoplastic cotton yellow lines, guardrails, and other safety improvements within Sullivan County's jurisdiction. And this money, I don't know how much, they didn't send how much it was going to be. Jim, do you or Eric have an amount?
This is also, I believe, Sam, to maintain traffic signals.
Maintain traffic signals and things. So just move, we can put it on first reading. Or y'all, is it already the grant already received?
This is the case.
We'll just, we'll put it on first reading.
Okay.
Sponsor moved to, the court is having on first reading. That completes our resolution agenda, I believe. So let me mention something before we adjourn. We had some discussion on first reading, second reading, whatever. I think it's a common one to tell you that you can change your vote. It's not great to get into wholesale changes of rules under which we operate, and I wouldn't recommend that we do, that we get that deep in. But if you want to be able to consider a resolution on first reading for passage with 13 votes, you can do that. All you got to do is make the decision if you want to do that at any time in the future. I guess you can either do a resolution, make a motion for the floor next meeting, not a special call meeting, but the next meeting, and give some thought to whether you want to pass things on first reading. I've looked at it over the years, and so much more information comes out sometime when it's public, when you put it on first reading. And I guess I'm making an argument for first reading. I don't mean to, but the fact is, when you have it on first reading and it's reported in the press, or reported on TV, you'll get some feedback from the public. And they'll tell you, give you opinions. So that's the value of having two readings, is that you do get it publicized. Obviously, we have public records. Anybody can find out what we have on our agenda anytime they want to. But think about it. If you like the way we're doing it, we're fine. I think it's just as chairman, I need to give you, tell you that you have that option. So I have a couple people wanting to be recognized. Commissioner Harvey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to bring the omnibus resolution back up on the agenda.
To bring it, to bring a resolution back up?
Yes.
Give me a moment. I will do it right. The reason I asked for with Dan, he said, we've never had this before. And I kind of thought we'd never had it before either. So we want to put our heads together and get it right. And I think, I think what I understood, and I think what Dan understood, is that Commissioner Harvey wants to revisit item number two and vote on it tonight. And so you would, would a proper motion be that I move adoption of item number two at this meeting?
Yes, and I just talked to Mr. Street to vote on first reading.
Vote on first reading. Okay. That's what he understood. I'm sorry I didn't know because we, I've never heard that before. So, Madam Clerk, can you put item number two on the board, first reading, and it requires 16 votes? Okay. Okay, I think we're clear. Requires 16 votes on first reading. That's what the motion is. So before you vote, we're voting on first reading. First reading. I'm saying? Okay, let's do this. Let's do this. Instead of putting it on the board, could I have your own session? We're trying to duck business here. And I think we, I think the commission knows where we are. And we got a proper motion on the floor. And I want to talk to the commission to vote on it. So let's do that. If you haven't, we can have a roll call vote. It says to pass item number two on first reading. I believe that's what the, that's what the proponent sponsor said, item number two on first reading. Well, we understand what it is, it does. Dan, go ahead. Go ahead.
We have a rule that was here before I ever got here. It says no written resolution can pass on first reading. So you can eliminate that rule at any point in time forever, or you can just suspend it for this one event. That's called suspending the rule. So you have to suspend that rule to vote on a resolution. Then when you suspend the rules, hang on just a second, let me finish. Then when you suspend the rules, you can vote on the resolution. It only takes 13. What we have always done forever and ever is we merge all that stuff together, and we vote on things like we have done numerous times tonight, by voting on things on first reading, which takes 16 votes. We suspend those two, we merge those two things together. Does that make sense?
Dan, this turned into a lesson on parliamentary procedure, which it should. The commissioners have their own knowledge of parliamentary procedure, and our duty. And I've taken the sponsor's motion for a floor, and I ask you to vote on the board when it opens, give your last second, to pass this on first reading. That is what it says. That's what the sponsor said. So we've got people on board, friends, guys. Dan, go ahead. Go ahead. Dan?
Got 16 votes to pass.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Glover, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question I had was to, was to suspend the rules to 16 votes. And if we get to 16 votes to suspend the rules, then we can pass that resolution with 13 positive votes, correct?
Correct. Commissioner, Attorney Street, let me recognize you. Go ahead.
He's answered already. The question, that's the question I had. We need 16 votes to suspend the rules. That's what we have to have. If we get 16 votes to suspend the rules tonight, then we move on to vote on the resolution, which only requires 13 votes, correct?
That's correct. I'll rule on that from the chair.
So if we get, if we get 13, if we get 16 votes on this resolution, that waivers the rules.
I'll rule on that from the chair. We don't need an opinion.
And then if we get the 16 votes to waiver the rules, then we vote on the item, and that item only requires 13 for passage. Okay.
That's great. Mr. Harvey?
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, it looks like we're ready to vote. The vote's clear. Board's clear. Vote on the motion to pass this on first reading. Don't shake your head at me. The motion is what the motion is. When the board opens, cast your vote. Cast it. Open the board here. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Having received, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Ten yes, 13 no, one absent.
Having the fellow received a majority, the motion fails. We have motion to adjourn. Attorney adjourn second. All in favor say aye. No vote, no. We're adjourned.